Public comment. We are on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment addressing some of the budget concerns that have been recently brought up. I'd like to thank everyone that's here for that, although we do have a lot in the audience from our police department for later in the meeting. But it is great to see so many residents being engaged because of these budget decisions that impact all of us. Excuse me. As many of you may already know, I wear multiple hats in this conversation. As a parent with kids in Lunenburg schools, a taxpayer, a former town employee, and a select board member, I've seen how these budget decisions affect both town and school staff as well as residents. Before serving on the select board, I worked as a town employee and was actively involved in budgeting, union negotiations, and capital planning. I've sat on both sides of the table in these discussions and understand how difficult it is to balance fair compensation for staff, essential services, and long-term financial stability. We're entering a difficult budget year, and every department, including the schools, is feeling the strain. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge and welcome our new town manager, Jen, who has been here for, I believe, one week exactly today.
One week.
She's stepping into a complex situation, and while it will take time to address, assess all of the moving pieces, I know she's committed to working with all the departments to find the best path forward. I also want to recognize the hard work that the school committee and the school administration is doing on this budget. Balancing the needs of the schools, staff, excuse me, students, staff, and financial realities is no easy task, and I appreciate the time and effort that has gone into this process so far. As we work through this process, we need to look beyond this year's budget to a bigger picture of our town's long-term infrastructure needs. The municipal building design committee has been working for years to address critical space and facility needs, including those that directly impact our schools, such as district offices and the ACE program, as well as the upcoming closure of the TCP building, which is anticipated to happen sooner than expected due to failing systems. This isn't just about municipal offices. This project has direct implications for our schools as well. Without a plan in place, we are at risk of losing critical spaces that serve our students and staff. If the TCP building closes sooner than anticipated and we don't move forward with a solution, our schools will be directly impacted. I understand that both the school budget discussions and the release of the building design plan happening at the same time have caused many residents to feel overwhelmed. To be clear, the school operating budget and the building project are two different funding processes. Any potential building projects would not come from the operating budget, but would instead require approval at town meeting and be funded separately through other means. This is not to say that different funding sources wouldn't impact our taxes as residents, but just to reiterate that these types of projects are not directly impacting the potential cuts in the town or the school budgets. I encourage everyone to stay engaged, not just in school funding discussions, but in the entire town budget process, including capital planning, staff compensation, and long-term financial stability. I believe that the select board, school committee, and finance committee, and other town boards are committed to working together to make informed, balanced decisions that serve the whole community. While there are challenges ahead, I believe that by working together, we can find solutions that serve both our students and our town as a whole. This process isn't easy, but through thoughtful planning and open discussions, it'll put us on the best possible path to move forward. Thank you.
All right. I was asked this evening to read a farewell address from now-retired Sergeant Tossi. "Good evening. I'd like to take a brief moment to address the select board and the town. In the spring of 2004, Jim Marino, then a sergeant, came to my home looking to recruit me into the Lunenburg Police Department. I was young, ambitious, and looking forward to the excitement of a police career. I write this letter in reflection of the past 20 years of service to the community, and it conveys some final thoughts as I bid farewell to the town. As a police officer, we're exposed to some of the most challenging events in people's lives: the tragic and traumatic, the violence, the life-changing mistakes people make, the opportunities they lose, the birth of a new life, and the loss of other lives; the times they just need a helping hand or compassionate ear, comfort in a time of grief, advocacy for the unable, and provide stability in times of chaos. What most people don't realize is that not only are we present for those events, but we are oftentimes solely responsible for making decisions that can drastically change the trajectory of the lives of others and of our own. It is crucial that police officers who, excuse me, are not outsiders looking in on others but are in fact vested members of the community, who recognize the impact their work can have on others, and are willing to put forth great effort every day to see to it that our community is cared for, looked after, and protected. As I reflect back on my time here, it is my sincere hope that I have contributed to the betterment of our town and the families that live and work here. I used to tell new officers that, quote, "You'll spend 20 or 30 years handling people in crisis, seeing the worst that humanity has to offer, dealing with the perpetual frustrations and insurmountable challenges to your safety and well-being, sacrificing your time away from your own family to do so, and carrying the burdens and memories of it all. But you will also get only a handful of moments over that time where you will be positioned to take an action that could drastically improve someone's life for the better. All those burdens you carry are worth it for the few moments where somebody's life is better because you were there." First, I would like to thank the members of the Lunenburg Police Department, past and present, for the hard work and dedication they put forth every day. These men and women exercise professionalism, dedication, and courage. I can attest that these officers are producing quality, consistent work. Their investigations, reports, and documentation are thorough and effective. They exercise sound judgment and display a sense of commitment to the community. They are versatile enough to work as both a team and individually. These officers come into work with a positive attitude and have established a positive rapport with their coworkers, community members, and visitors. They make a recognizable effort to spend time with the residents and visitors of the town. They participate in events at the Boys and Girls Club, the schools, and the Eagle House so they can meet and interact with their patrons. Unbeknownst to the town, many of these officers participate in these events on their own personal time and do so because they believe it is the right thing to do. Officers take a moment to stop and have a friendly conversation with the public and have the initiative to introduce themselves to business owners in town. These new connections enlighten officers to their concerns of the community and provide residents with a sense of transparency and accountability from their officers. There are countless previously untold stories about how our staff has exemplified professionalism, heroism, and good character even when no one is looking. Stories like Jeff Thibodeau and Josh Matthew hiring a cleaning company and furnace repair technician for an elderly man in need and paying the bills out of their own pockets. They did it because the man was in need, and they felt it was the right thing to do. How John Brock used his training and skills at a chaotic scene to provide lifesaving medical aid to a man stabbed in the head. Actions that his surgical team later stated were directly responsible for saving the man's life. Sean Zerate and Josh Matthew buying toys for young siblings who are mourning the loss of their younger sibling's life. Gage Russell escorting a grieving widow to the hospital and staying there with her until family arrived. He did this out of compassion and knowing that she would be all alone if he left. After a late-night residential break-in, an officer returned to the victim's home with tools and supplies to board up her shattered bedroom window when she had no one else to help. Amanda Morris, countless hours of her free time spent coordinating and working in the department's public outreach events, especially those geared towards kids and families. Amanda was an anchor of the department, kept us all grounded, focused on positivity and cohesiveness as a team. After taking a call about a break-in where a young boy was heartbroken that his game console was stolen, Nick Marino drove home, retrieved his own game console, and gave it to the young boy. Jesse Reed and Rob DiCosta forcing entry into the home of a person in crisis and unflinchingly applying multiple tourniquets assuredly saved the victim's life. This call was on the heels of a motor vehicle accident where Jesse Reed had applied a tourniquet to the driver's leg, an action that was confirmed to be the main cause for the victim's survival. When a family's home burned down at Christmas time, Brad McNamara and Cam and Roe rallied almost eerie officers available to go out and buy presents with their own money so the kids could have a Christmas. These are just a few times when officers without recognition exemplify the mission statement to the department, which is to strive to provide the highest quality of police service to our community members and visitors alike. We believe in community policing and all the benefits that are realized from this concept. We will strive to maintain the strong partnerships that have been developed with our community and continuously look for ways to improve that relationship. I would like to congratulate Acting Chief of Police Jeff Thibodeau and Acting Lieutenant Sean Zerate on attaining your new positions of leadership. Both of these men have provided no less than complete dedication to our mission. They have proven themselves to be present, accessible, knowledgeable, and communicative. They both foster a working environment of respect, dignity, and professionalism. They provide clear goals and direction. They believe in the notion that they should earn and maintain the trust of others. They empower their officers to do their prescribed job functions without over-management and express trust in their officers' judgment. They consistently evaluate their staff's performance, take advantage of educable moments, and hold them accountable for their actions. They find value in providing high-quality, realistic, and relevant training that manages risk and limits liability to the town and its officers. In a police organization, quality leadership is paramount to the success of the department as a whole, development of a professional working culture, and the morale of the individual members. Over the past few years, we have felt the effects of both sides of this leadership coin. It is my firm belief that Chief Thibodeau and Lieutenant Zerate will develop a working environment of mutual respect, trusted in leadership and administration, open-mindedness, clarity of mission, and professional decency. Chief Thibodeau and Lieutenant Zerate express empathy, embrace the diversity of their staff's personalities, abilities, and perspectives. In short, Chief Thibodeau and Lieutenant Zerate have proven their ability to inspire their team to learn more, accomplish more, and become the best versions of themselves and have earned the respect of all members of the department. So I say now to the town of Lunenburg and the Lunenburg Police Department, thank you. I hope that I have made a positive impact in your lives in some small way, and to the team at Lunenburg Police, keep up the good work, stay safe, and remember to take care of one another. In warm regards, Joshua Tossi, Sergeant, retired.
Thank you. The Board of Assessors hosted their "How Can We Help Senior Tax Workshop" last week. If you weren't able to attend, the recording was uploaded to YouTube, so if you missed the workshop and you'd like to get the information they shared, you can find the recording over there. Exemptions can be filed until April 1st, and if you have any questions, you can reach out to the Board of Assessors. Are there any public comments from the public? Oh, who's going to make it first?
Brian Leighton, 88 Beachview Road, also the school committee chair. As school committee chair, the school committee welcomes feedback and comments, recommendations, either to the superintendent, to the school committee, and also at our meetings as well. I also encourage members of the public to reach out to the select board as well as to our legislators, but tonight I am speaking as a citizen. Tonight, I saw the agenda had the Budget Task Force recommendation, and I want to thank you for putting that in the agenda as well as creating that task force. I think it was very important work to be done. I was able to watch many meetings on YouTube, and I feel like this, though it's great to have on the agenda, I feel like it's a little late. I think this was very eye-opening when I was watching the Youtubes when the fire department came on and talked about the concerns that they had, and I didn't even know about those until I heard it in the meeting, and I was shocked how much needs there are in all the different departments. And we even heard it last year at the budget season. And this goes way back to at an annual town meeting when the clerk needed to get a pay raise. And again, we have these concerns with our employees, and we see job postings where they're non-benefit positions because the town doesn't want to pay benefits to positions, so we're not posting positions that have benefits or have the hours. And job postings go on, and they stay posted for a long period of time, and we don't get applicants, we don't get those positions filled. We're understaffed. I think there needs to be action, and I hope you seriously look at every recommendation. I know healthcare has been an issue that I had spoke to this committee about before. I also think that the Community Preservation Act can bring in a lot of resources as well. But I think you need to put it in the hands of the citizens as well, so that they have the opportunity to vote for this, just like this committee also voted to put the override on the ballot last year. And if it's another override, so be it. I think the biggest problem is the inaction. We need to take action. I want to read an excerpt from the Budget Task Force recommendation. "The recent rate of inflation and existing needs of the town indicate that adequate funding of the town in the absence of a Proposition Two and a Half override requires a reduction in costs and/or an increase in non-tax revenue. Unfortunately, opportunities to reduce costs or increase revenue are very, very limited and are unlikely to generate enough money to make up for the gap between current costs and revenues raised by property taxes. It's limited by Proposition Two and a Half. This is the single largest problem in Lunenburg. It can't be stated more than enough. Lunenburg needs an override, and this committee, this board, needs to step forward and put it on the ballot for the town to make the vote." Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Hello. Mandy Gilman, 186 Reservoir Road. Welcome, Jen, to Lunenburg. Great to have you. I guess I'm back. Last year, me and some other citizens in town helped lead the override effort, which passed, and I haven't had a public opportunity to thank every single person who voted for the override and saved a million dollars in school funding costs. And school funding, you know, to support our kids. You know, unfortunately, I think, you know, we never promised that was going to fix everything, and so, and I think, you know, there's been some discussion in other public forums that I think we all agree on that that was a stopgap measure to sort of look at, and I'm happy the work of the Budget Task Force went on over the last year. But, you know, again, our schools are facing unprecedented cuts and crisis. Again, we are looking for leadership in town and collaboration across select board and school committee members to face this problem head-on. And, you know, I know that other departments, last year there was some discussion that other departments are suffering as well. You know, there was opportunity throughout that process for others to, you know, spearhead and join the override. Last year, that didn't happen, and so, you know, I'm hopeful that we are looking at what those costs are to fill those vacancies. You know, I don't want to file for another override, but if we don't find a solution together, and the end result is that we as a community have to accept cutting dozens of teachers, there's 36 positions that are currently on the chopping block. We will have no other choice. That will be our only option. And given the deadlines to file warrant articles, I know some of it has to do with, you know, hiring a new town manager, all the change that's going around, the superintendent is, you know, we're going to have a new superintendent. You know, I worry that we're going to make irreversible decisions in a very chaotic year where we haven't had the time to plan. I'm disappointed we haven't planned more, but I do understand why there are some factors. You know, the number that the previous town manager gave the school committee is just not enough. Thirty-six positions cannot be cut from our school district. Kindergarteners cannot have 30 kids in a class. It's just, I can't even imagine being a kindergarten teacher with 30 children in the classroom. As for the proposal for the new town hall, practically speaking, I know it's two separate pots of money, and, you know, I will not deny that a new town hall and some new facilities are needed. But entertaining spending $20 million while counting, cutting 36 positions from the school district is something that needs to be said in the same sentence, because the town hall will cost this town money, and we will have to vote for a debt exclusion override. I know it's a different type of override in order to fund the town hall project. Lastly, if I was an employee, and I am not an employee of this town, but if I was an employee working in positions outside of the school, who, you know, the school people did get money last year, again, not enough, but, you know, there's a lot of people who work here, I think, who probably deserve raises, who deserve more positions being filled. It would be great if town hall was open more. Looking those people in the face and saying, "We'd rather have a new building," doesn't sit well with me. So that's where I'm coming from. I want to thank all of you for all your work and appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mandy.
Hi, I'm Julie Long. I live at 569 West Townsend Road, and I have lived there for the past 13 years. Amanda, I really liked your opening statement, so I apologize now for any redundancy. Police officers, I really appreciate you guys. I think you're amazing. To get started, I want to explain that I have three children. My youngest is attending LPS, the other is at Turkey Hill, and my oldest is at LMS. Before I explain why I'm here, I want to first thank all of you for all that you do on behalf of Lunenburg. I grew up in Townsend, and my father was heavily involved with town politics and worked on the zoning board for many years, so I have a sense of how taxing this work is on an individual and on your family. I know it's just not easy, and I appreciate all of you. That being said, I would like to take this opportunity to voice my concern for the Lunenburg Public Schools. As far as I'm aware, the budget that was provided is now presenting a $3.5 million shortfall. What this means for the schools at large, for the schools, is that a large number of crucial staff will be cut, along with much-needed programming and supplies. I know that the schools are still in the midst of producing a drafted budget, but with this extreme shortfall, catastrophic changes will have to be made. As adults, we are all here hopefully having had a good education, especially having not lived through COVID as a child-aged student. Our children have proven to be quite resilient, but they are the next generation, and their ability to impact this town and the world in the future really depends a lot on the education provided to them now. I do not pretend to know all the financial needs of this town. All the causes of this town are important, and I am sure everyone is working hard to make sure many needs are met. I ask that while the town's budgeting process is underway, that everyone here really focuses not just on one's own cause, but on the overall well-being of this community. For me, in all that I have done in my adulthood, my energy and passion has been focused on the well-being of children, even before having my own children. I have seen firsthand the consequences of their needs, such as education, having not been met. Children, in my opinion, are the most important cause. Please do everything in your power to make sure that the school system does not sink. Even more, I implore you to help find a way to let the school system not only survive, but to thrive. Are we okay living in a community with a sunken ship? Are we okay accepting Lunenburg as a community where our schools are at the bottom of the totem pole as far as quality? Just staying above water is not enough. I hope that all members here, regardless of the department you represent, interact as a whole, having an understanding of everyone's needs, and that you will be able to then properly prioritize the needs of the town. We cannot be self-absorbed, where tunnel vision continues before our ability to see ourselves as a community. And I know Amanda spoke to this, but you were all speaking to the collaboration piece of all this, and when I'm seeing all departments, I think I expected to be seeing more people representing different departments in the town, and you may very well be here, but I'm not familiar with everybody. But that was basically my message, is just hoping that we can all come together and not be trying to meet our needs individually, if that makes any sense. So thank you again for all your time, and thank everybody here.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Harp, we're going to move on to Zoom now. Ms. Harp.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. So, you know, I'm-
Sorry to interrupt. If you don't mind, can you just state your full name and your address at the beginning of your public comment?
Yes. Sundrya Harp, 20 Pratt Street in Lunenburg, Massachusetts. So, once again, I'm here. I spoke last year at one of the various meetings about the school budget cuts, and I'm just going to keep it short and sweet because I think the people who went before me all said it more eloquently than I have, than I have, that I will. But I have two students in the school system, and one is a special education student, and I'm worried about how these budget cuts will affect her. You know, I'm worried about which teachers are going to go, and if parents are going to go as well, I think we need them all, and I'm just concerned and just hope that we can really come to a resolution. And that's it. That's all I'd say.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Harp. Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, everybody. John Bowen, 162 Highland Street, Lunenburg. I just wanted to make mention that I had raised this over the course of the last year that we're looking at five years of Two and a Half overrides to address matters in this town in a piecemeal manner. I support what the school is planning to do. I think that the school's direction has been good. I can say that from personal experience. My son transferred between five schools while he was with his mother for a number of years, and my son is now living with me. And since he's been there, the people like Josh Kozel definitely needed, Stacy Canfield, Tim Santry, and a number of other professionals in that school, including a number of teachers. My son has came to this school system last year. He's been with me now for a year, and he came to this school system in the last year. And in the last year, the end of last year, he failed, coming from Tewksbury High School, he failed everything up until he came here. He did not do summer school. He made honor roll last year. He made honor roll, the high honors, the first half of this year, and he's special honors, second half of this term, rather. I just wanted to make mention that, like I said, I said that we're going to be having five years of overrides. Why? Because after a conversation that I had with Ezekiel with regard to the number of different things that are happening in this town with how these volunteers handle the management of the money on their boards, how this town has failed to be able to take care of their infrastructure, particularly their buildings, and everything else, and we came up with a number, actually, I gave him the number, that if every registered voter, every property owner here and business, every property owner and business pays $1,386.33, okay, in the next fiscal year, for the year, we will bring in $6,238,485. And this discussion about overrides will cease, and we will have a surplus in addition to the $2.5 million that we already have, which will bring us up to about $8.5 million worth of money to be able to address matters, take loans, pay interest, okay, which will also assist us, this CPA thing that you have going on here, which I think is a Democrat joke, okay? The reality is, sell some property. Sell some property, select board. Let's put some property out there. Let's sell some property. If you owe money on taxes on your property, you work for the city, you shouldn't be working for the city, the town, okay? And there are people in this town who work for this town who owe $8,000, $10,000, $15,000 on their property taxes, and I don't see them paying their property taxes, and I don't see the assessors taking action. That being said, I think that the proper direction, and I'd be willing to put it up, I'd be willing to put up extra taxes for the amount of money that I had just mentioned, $1,386.33 for the next fiscal year as an override payment taken quarterly to be able to generate $6,238,485 plus the $2.5 million that we have, we will be set in motion to not do an override the following year, to be able to address municipal building issues, to be able to address school issues, not lay anybody off at school, and take care of our business. And that's my recommendation. You can take that how you want. That's the conversation that I had, but you know what? I heard somebody at one point in time, I think it was Evan Waters, he said, when he was on the finance committee, that, "Oh, well, we're an affluent town. Well, then let's start acting like one. Put your money, people, where your mouth is." And I also want to say that I think that if we do hold a vote for an override, that this board votes to close the door on town meeting, that you come to town meeting when it starts, you vote, and you don't leave till we're done. There is no more with this lady organized last year to bring people in, only when the vote came up while they all texted, and people used their little clickers and shared them with other people. And that needs to stop, because that is not democratic government, okay? That is one group of people taking advantage of the voting rights of the people of this home-rule town, and that, I suggest, be done. You come in, you show up, the doors are closed, and you stay. And you stay five, six, eight hours if you want what you want because that's what it looked like last year at town meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mrs. Lockwood.
Okay, well, thank you on the Lockwood 91 Main Street. You know, I heard a lot of comments tonight. I will not address the last gentleman and I apologize, I'm not in person because I have the flu. So, you know, we are, Lunenburg is a good community and it's a community that watch out for each other. And I think there's always many needs and as a community, we always need to speak as a community. It's not about one thing, it's not about the other. I think it's about working together. I do have a lot of questions about the school budget, the process that they got to it. I mean, we are February, almost mid-February and the budget presented in the last school committee meeting is one that could have been presented a month or two before. And we could have been talking about the needs and adjustments that needs to have to that budget, you know, one or two months ago. And what I find interesting is that presenting the raw budget from the superintendent that it was presented last week, the way it was presented, has allowed no feedback from the school committee. And what that leads to is, you know, as Mr. Peter Dearmore spoke last week, said, "We need to do a lot of work. We need to look into these things." So, I asked the members of the school community and all citizens to actually go through this process. It is unfortunate that the school committee does not have a budget timeline like the town does. Because if, you know, and you know, you can't quite be part of every committee, but you know, when a superintendent is presenting a budget that is, that is like 12% deficit from levels, from the expected 2.66 service or 2.5 service in February, when most of the expenses came in and could have been said, couldn't have been had predicted at this level in December. There is nothing on that budget that I saw. Since all the negotiation with the teachers and all, everything else happened before the new year, that budget could have been presented much earlier, which then would allow for the school committee to actually do their job. Which, for example, on their budget meeting last week, they said, "You know, we have had high school classes running with five kids." So, like, we're paying, you know, when you think of service level, you're like, you're servicing five kids. At the same level, you're servicing 30 kids. And I kind of understand that at its value. And, you know, and I'm a fan, personally speaking, I'm a fan of classical education, which is you teach kids the basic and you allow them to learn, to take interest in what they would like to learn and explore what they'd like to learn. There is so much you can do on that. But on the basic level, like, even if that is not what you believe, you know, if we're paying the same service level to service five kids versus 32 kids, that is a big gap there that the school committee needs to do a job on that. There is sports that we're offering on that. And I'm just saying that maybe that $3 million, $3 million-plus dollars that was presented as a deficit last week, it's not really that $3 million. I think we need to allow the school committee to do their job. And it's very unfortunate that the current school administration, the school superintendent and her team only brought that into the school committee at the beginning of February when, there is nothing that I know of outside the insurance, which, you know, Excel is a great tool. I know we could do much, we can do so much better with a lot of tools, but, you know, there is so much you can do with just like, literally you can do the same work with Lotus 123. But, you know, I think there's a lot of work that we need to do. I supported the last override. My family supported the last override. I know it passed with a little over 100 votes. I'll tell you, four votes came from this, from 91 Main Street. And we're a strong believer in schools. But be presented with this in February, it's like, we can do better than this. On the flip side, I urge everyone to think of, you know, the long-term cost. The primary building, we lost. It was, it is heartbreaking. It's a historical building. That was a high school at some point. It became the primary school, primary school. And it was a beautiful architectural building that we lost because we took no action. And then, we are going through the same thing with the TCP building. And we are talking now and we are taking actions on deactivating most of that building. And again, these are all buildings that have fed, at some point historically speaking, into the history of our town. And now, you know, when there is an actual proposal of, you know, doing a maintenance and an upgrade into two historical buildings in town, we get people saying this is not important. Like, I dare anyone who thinks that we don't need to do this to actually ask Kath Herrick for a tour of her office. And her, as the official record keeper of the town, to show, for her to show you all how record keeping is happening. It is insane. So, you would not allow that to happen in a building if that was the school building. So, you know, like, before we throw stones, we like, should like, make sure we know to do that. So anyway, so I think the town needs to, you know, take a deep breath before stuff starts throwing stones on each other. And that's not my goal, but I am calling on a lot of people to actually do a more true job and into their functions. I know these are volunteers. I'm a volunteer in town as well. But, you know, you're volunteering, but we have standards for you. And the school committee to be presented with a $3-plus million deficit this late in the game is kind of, you know, BS, to say the least. So, I know, Mr. Chairman, this has been more than three minutes, but I appreciate you, appreciate, you know, the town. And sorry, I'm not there to give you all my facial expressions. I'm, you know, I'm just battling the flu. So, thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you all for your public comments tonight. We're going to jump down to appointments, ratification, and resignations. And we have two appointments tonight. We have the ratification of the Town Manager's Appointment of Police Officer Christopher Bergeron, effective February 24, 2025, and the ratification of the Town Manager's Appointment of Police Officer Jacob LeChance to Sergeant, effective February 12, 2025.
Thank you, members of the board, Town Manager. I am pleased to recommend candidate Christopher Bergeron for an appointment to the position of full-time police officer. Chris completed the Worcester Police Academy in 2014. Chris has been a full-time police officer with the Hubbardston Police Department since 2014. Chris has successfully completed all the pre-employment qualifications. Chris is also a certified police officer by Massachusetts Post Commission. Chris is a resident of Lunenburg and has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Anna Maria College and has also obtained a master's degree in criminal justice from Anna Maria College, graduated in 2016. Through his background investigation, it was found that Chris is a very dedicated, honest, and hard-working individual with a strong work ethic. Through the conversations I have had with Chris, I've found him to be professional, honest, and knowledgeable about policing. I have spoken with Chris and I believe he will be a good addition to the Lunenburg Police Department and the community. I am pleased to present Christopher Bergeron as a candidate for full-time police officer and thank you for my consideration.
Thank you. You can do the other one too, if you want. Just do them both.
I'm pleased to recommend Officer Jacob LeChance for the position of Sergeant. Jake has been with the Lunenburg Police Department since 2014. Jake was hired first as a reserve officer and then hired full-time and completed the Massachusetts State Police Academy in 2018. Jake has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Fitchburg State University, graduated in 2012. Jake has spent time in many roles in the Lunenburg Police Department as field training officer, accident reconstruction officer, TASER instructor, and recently assigned as the traffic officer for the department. Jake has also been an instructor with the Boylston Police Academy and served as an assistant football coach with Lunenburg High School for 10 years. I've worked with Jake throughout his entire career with the Lunenburg Police Department and I have personally supervised him during his traffic officer assignments. I've found Jake to be a hard-working, self-motivated, and devoted employee of the department. The tasks that Jake has been given as traffic officer included writing grants, securing radar and speed measurement equipment for the town. Jake has also conducted complex accident reconstructions and coordinated traffic studies and data which are used to address traffic-related issues, all with minimal supervision by me. Jake took on all these tasks and excelled at them. Jake's consistency and dedication to the community and the department along with the knowledge and work experience have prepared him to be a supervisor. I would like to recommend Jake for the position of Sergeant for the Lunenburg Police Department.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
I hope we can hear from-
Oh, sure. If you two would like to speak.
He already has the posture down.
Good evening. So, I would just like to thank you guys for this opportunity. I look forward to meeting everyone and getting to know them.
Thank you.
That was pretty good. That was pretty good. Howdy. I'm Jacob LeChance. I just want to thank my friends, family, coworkers that all came out to support me today. Very grateful for this opportunity and I hope that all my brothers and sisters will continue to provide the best service for this community that they deserve. Thank you. Any questions for me?
I have to imagine your parents are here.
They are, they are. Right in the back row.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, do you go by Chris or Christopher? I haven't had a chance to work with you, obviously, but looking forward to, you know, having you on the team. If you don't know, I was a previous employee of the department. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And Jake, from riding the bus together back in, you know, elementary school. I'm really proud of you. You know, I was there when you got promoted full-time and, you know, I think you're going to be a great addition to the command staff and looking forward to the different skills you bring to the department.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
First, I want to thank you and the rest of the officers in the department here for their service and congratulate both of you. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
I think I had the fortunate circumstance of waiting for election results one year with you for hours. And, you know, I think we struck up a conversation and it was certainly really good. I know you have the misfortune of being called Jake from Allstate or what is it?
I do wear the khakis.
And then also Scott, and I think that's the other one you're called from time to time, from, right, from the Bruins? Am I getting that right?
Yep.
Anyway, no, I want to, obviously, it's been a pleasure working with you over these years. Certainly, you're well-qualified for the role. I think it just, it speaks to the high-quality first of student that comes out of our school system. I think it speaks to the quality of training that comes from the police department to observe officers grow and certainly Officer or Sergeant now, LeChance. I think this is going to be to your credit and the credit, of course, of your family and all those who've supported you along the way.
Thank you very much.
And to Chris, as our newest member, usually when we have like younger appointees, I have a lot more to say. But someone who's been on the force for over 10 years, you know, you certainly, you know, like I said, you have the posture down and that's usually a good sign is having that presence in the room. But you're joining a great team, you know, working underneath Chief Thibodeau, working underneath Lieutenant Zerate. I think Lunenburg is our shining. All departments in Lunenburg are great, but I think the Lunenburg Police Department certainly stands out as our, I think, the best example of what we can be as a community. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. Welcome aboard, Chris. Thank you for wanting to work for the town as well. And since we have like half of the department here, thank you for all that you do. You are much appreciated. And also thank you for your patience today. I know it took a while to get to this point, so thank you for sitting through all of our public comments. All right, Jen, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, so first of all, Chris, to you, thank you for joining. I look forward to working with you. Thank you to the town of Hubbardston for training you and letting us take you from them. To your family, thank you for your support. I know in this profession, the support of family members cannot be overstated. Jake, I haven't met you yet, but I think that the remarks from Chief Thibodeau speak to your contribution to the department. So, congratulations on the well-deserved promotion and congratulations to your family as well. And the fact that it is after hours and that many members of the department are here on their own time to support the strength of the department just shows what a true community we have within the police force. So, I look forward to working with all of you, but especially, this is your night tonight, so congratulations to you both.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jen. I will move, okay. I will move to ratify the Town Manager's Appointment of Police Officer Christopher Bergeron, effective February 24, 2025, and the Town Manager's Appointment of Police Officer Jacob LeChance to Sergeant, effective February 12, 2025.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yep.
We'll take a quick call.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to let the room clear out. And I did skip over announcements and communications from other boards, so we'll do that real quick before we get to the public hearing. I don't have any announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? No, all right. And communications from other boards? I don't believe they had one during public comment. I think that's it. Yeah, sure. Let's go down to the Town Manager Report.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some project updates for the community. The library team room expansion is currently in Phase 1. Two new offices are constructed and are being painted now. The trim and doors still need to be installed. But Phase 2, the team room expansion, is expected to begin this week. That part of the project will take about three weeks and the children's story craft room is scheduled for replacement this Friday. The team room is temporarily closed as we announced last meeting, but teens are invited to hang out in the café area and in the seating area of the library's main hall. And the young adult book collection is available upon request. Regarding this building and the roof repairs and chimney restoration, the weather has continued to be difficult. One chimney is almost complete and they're going to begin, beginning work on the second chimney and then moving over to the Ritter Building for the remainder of the work. I have a couple of general updates. The past week, I've been focusing largely on the budget and town meeting, but we have been notified by the Department of Telecommunications and Cable that our cable TV license with Comcast is set to expire on February 29, 2028. And while that sounds like a lot of time, federal law requires that the community go through what's called the ascertainment process, which is the formal renewal of the cable license. That process typically takes about three years to go through. So, this was going to be coming to the board for a future agenda item to discuss how we want to proceed. Many communities stand up a community, but, a committee, but that's certainly the pleasure of the board. In addition, for regional dispatch, last week, the Administrative Board of the Nishoba Valley Regional Dispatch District voted to allow the town of Hudson to join the district. Both Chief Sullivan and interim Chief Thibodeau were in support of this addition. I did rely on their opinion heavily in casting my vote. In the short term, with the addition of Hudson, this will decrease slightly our overall assessment. And I think that there's going to be some continuing conversations about the future of the district as we proceed, but right now, Hudson, their call volume, they'll now take the number-one spot for call volume and Lunenburg will drop to number two. the number-one spot for call volume, and Lunenburg will drop to number-two. So, I think that this is a positive for Lunenburg. Our current vacancies, the Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager, 19 hours per week, that is in process, so we do have some applicants. As we know, the permanent police chief position has been posted. That has now closed. Applications are all in that have been... The deadline was yesterday. So, now the screening committee will start to review, and we'll discuss the process going forward. I don't even know how many applicants have received at this point, but we'll report on that in the future. We have a seasonal lifeguard position for up to 40 hours a week, a seasonal beach director for up to 40 hours a week. So, those are our current recruitments. I have a couple of grant announcements, which is always positive news. The DPW received a Mastock grant in the amount of $21,953.68, and the Fire Department received from the state the firefighter safety grant in the amount of $18,960. That funding will be used to obtain a power drying rack to allow the protective gear to return to service quicker, obtain a thermal imaging camera, replace two power saws, replace some forestry helmets and gloves. And we also received the Maya, our insurance agency's wellness grant for another year of the Healthy Snack Program, which I know many employees benefit from and enjoy greatly. So, thank you to Maya, and thank you for all the work that the department has in working on obtaining those grant funds. And we continue to have vacancies on boards, committees, and commissions. I'm not going to run through the whole list, but if you're interested in talking about service to the community, we will fit you in somewhere. So, please complete an application. And that concludes my manager's report.
All right. Any questions for the Town Manager?
I have one.
Sure.
Can you remind me who's on the screening committee for the police chief? Do you know?
Let me try off the top of my head. So, Chief Sullivan.
Yeah.
The Senior Center Director, the Superintendent. There is a chief from another community. There is a Town Manager from another community, myself, and I think that's it.
I think so, too.
Is that it? Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Jen. All right, we will move on to our public hearing for a Class II Auto Dealer License at 40 Summer Street. And I'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice.
If I can find it, I will read it. Got it. The licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, at 7:05 at Town Hall, 17 Main Street, second floor, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. On the application submitted by, I don't know how to pronounce your name, I'm so sorry about that, Glossial Bueno de Oliveira, 3600 Mystic Valley Parkway, apartment 811, Medford, Massachusetts, 02155, DBA Web Motors Group, Inc., for a Class II Auto Dealer License. License is to be exercised at the premises located at 40 Summer Street. The applicant seeks to store and display 50 used motor vehicles for sale. Proposed hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday; 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Sunday; 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., or by appointment only.
All right, thank you. All right, can you both state your names and your addresses, please?
My name is Glossial Bueno de Oliveira, Brazilian. I'm 38-years-old. I live in Medford, 3600 Mystic Valley Parkway, Medford.
Okay, thank you. And you're the applicant, correct?
What is it?
You're the applicant, yes. Okay. And your name?
I have a question. I bring for the guys for helping me translation.
I understand.
Because my English is a little bit...
That's okay.
My name is William Vienna. My address is 1184 Mary Street, Elizabeth, New Jersey.
Okay. And what is your relationship to the applicant?
I'm just helping him with the translation of your questions.
Were you hired? Do you know him or the business?
Yeah, I know him. Yeah, I'm not hired, I know him. He's my friend.
Friend, okay. Thank you. All right, if you don't mind, can you just speak a little bit about your background experience, any businesses that you've operated, and just walk us through your application?
Okay. I'll ask him to talk a little bit about yourself. And about your background, what you studied. Okay. Do you mind if he speaks in Portuguese and I translate for you?
That's totally fine.
Okay. I'm an entrepreneur. He's an entrepreneur, and he has a degree, a bachelor's degree, in business administration. I've experienced car dealership for six years in business. Six years, six years of experience with a car dealership. I've experienced selling cars and dealing with cars for the past six years. And that'll be all, yeah, his experience.
Okay. Can you just talk about this application, what you want to do with this business, just...
Yeah. I filed an application for number 40 Summer Street for Web Motors Group, Inc. And the last meeting I applied for was for 30 cars. Okay. He submitted an application to sell 40 cars, and on the last meeting, they agreed with the number of 30 cars and... 30 cars, with the hours of operation from 9:00 to 7:00 on the second day of the sixth. Yeah, the business hours you guys just said in the beginning, so that's accurate, that's what he's saying right now. Second day to the sixth, from 9:00 to 7:00. Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 7:00. Saturday, 10:00 to 5:00. Sunday closed. And also working with appointments.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add about your application or your background before I open it up to questions from the board?
No. No, yeah, he's good. You guys can...
All right, all right, thank you. I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
Sure, I'll start. How many dealerships or other do you currently own?
How many he owns?
Yeah, currently. Are you currently in business somewhere else doing the same thing?
Does he have a dealership? No. No, he doesn't have any, none.
All right. And that's... The bigger question is, and so, he's also neither a treasurer, a principal, no part ownership in any other dealership or any other car license anywhere.
He's not a associate, neither a partner, neither a contact with me. No, no. I've been a general manager in a store, and I've been a investor in cars in other stores, but never... He was a general manager in another store, and he worked, like, selling cars for another dealerships, but never being a partner or being an owner of any other dealership.
All right. And what about a manager? Was he a manager of any other dealerships?
He was a manager. Yeah, manager, yeah, he was.
Okay. Thank you.
Renee or Amanda, do you guys have questions yet?
Haven't we had a similar application in the past? Is this...
We did for the same address.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
Not the same name?
The same applicant? No.
Is LPD going to be giving a presentation?
They will, yep, yep. But for now, we're just asking questions of the applicant himself.
I don't have any questions until we move further.
Okay. You want to...
I'd go to the PD.
Okay. And then we'll... Okay, we'll come back. All right, so thank you, we don't have any other questions right now. We may have questions for you after the public hearing, okay?
Good. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, Officer Hill, I believe you want to come up?
Officer Hill, Lunenburg PD. In relation to this application, I just wanted to speak about an investigation I had once this application was submitted to the town. So, I have a lot of paperwork, so we might have to go over anything. There's a lot of stuff I'm going to go over. I have copies of most of it, about half a dozen copies for any relevant information. I would actually recommend, when I get to it, that we... That I do give you guys those copies. To start, though, on January 6th of this year, I was working a uniform 7:00 to 3:00 shift. I was advised by Chief Thibodeau that he had received an email from Ann Aubrey of the Town Manager's Office in relation to documents submitted for a Class II Dealer's License for 40 Summer Street. Shortly after, I arrived at Town Hall and spoke with Ann, who showed me paperwork submitted by Glossial Bueno de Oliveira on behalf of his LLC, Web Motors, Inc., which is registered out of 40 Summer Street in Lunenburg. While going over the paperwork with Ann, she advised she was given two separate surety bonds, each for $25,000. For those who don't know what that is, it is effectively malpractice insurance, but for the car world, and by mass general law, you do need a $25,000 bond to make any victims of malpractice whole. Ann, in her normal duties, spoke to both companies, Travelers and Western Surety. Travelers was able to advise them that they had an active bond to Web Motors, but while speaking with Western Surety, advised that the bond that she had in her hand was not a legitimate bond and was instead registered to a Dasa Motors LLC out of Lemonster to a different dealership. I was able to speak with Western Surety through email and by phone. I was able to advise them what I had in my hand, similar to what Ann had in her hand, explain to them what I was looking at. I was told by them that they had an entirely different document in their system. I sent them the document, and it was advised by them that it was fraudulent and changed, altered, and that they could send me the actual copy. And I think, if I could give that to you guys, I think that's important as well. May I?
Yes, you may.
This one, there's seven copies. Is the one submitted to the town?
And this is the Western Surety one?
That's correct.
Yep.
This is the one that was actually in the Western Surety system?
Okay. So, this one was submitted to the town, this one was actually in the system?
Correct.
Let's think and note that.
You said there's seven copies?
Correct, yeah.
All right, you can keep going.
Okay.
I am, yep.
So, if you look at the first page, you'll notice that the copy submitted to the town is only two pages, whereas the actual document given by Western Surety is three pages. But we'll start with the first page that was submitted to the town. If you look at the first page, you will see six fillable spots in the document.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind giving us a moment?
Yeah, sorry, I'm going to...
No, no worries.
...just read it out real quick. That's the same.
So, I can write on...
You're asking them down.
Which one is the town?
Three pages is what, and what, Chuck?
No. Renee, do you have two?
I have two pages.
Amanda, do you have two?
I have three pages.
All right. Hold on.
I'm going to give her my three pages.
Yep. Here's another three-page. Now, you have one of both. All right. Let's just reorient ourselves to this again. There's one with two pages and there's one with three pages, right?
Correct. Two pages was the actual document submitted. There was about 50 pages of total documents submitted to the town, but when it comes to the Western Surety bond, those two-page ones were the ones submitted to the town. The three-page one was the one that was an actual Western Surety document.
Yes, continue.
So, if you look at the first page on both bonds, both the one submitted to the town and the legitimate one, you'll see there were six fillable spots in a PDF-style document. That would be the bond number, the effective date for the bond coverage, name of the company secured by the bond, location of business secured by the bond, date signed by the bond company, and an additional spot, again, for the name of business secured by the bond. Once I was able to go over both, I noticed a lot of discrepancies. The first one, the bond number, 67166839, is the same on both documents. That is how I was able to figure out Western Surety's actual bond number. The second one, the effective date, if you look in the original document, it is August 20th, 2024. If you look at the effective date on the altered document submitted to the town, it would be October 1st, 2024. Going down slightly, you'll see the name of the company actually secured by the bond itself by Western Surety. In the original document, it would be Dasa Motors, Inc., out of Lemonster. And if you look at the name of company secured by bond on the document submitted to the town, it would be Web Motors, Inc. Going a little bit down after that, you'll see the location of business secured by the bond itself. The original bond had 728 Central Street, Lemonster, the original location of Dasa Motors. And you will see in the document submitted to the town, location of business secured by bond to be 40 Summer Street in Lunenburg. Similarly, to the second one, the effective date, you'll see the date of signature by surety company to be August 19th originally, and secondly submitted October 1st again. Once again, the additional spot for the name of business is again Dasa Motors, Inc. in the original, and Web Motors Group, Inc. Just as a quick summary of that, out of the six possible spots where documentation could have been changed, five of them were. The only one not being changed, the actual bond number. If you go to the second page, there's again two fillable spots in the document. That'll be name of location of employee for Western Surety, that's the person actually granting the bond, type of business being secured by bond, the bond number, the company name, dollar amount secured, the date, the corporate seal of Western Surety was actually affixed and stamped to the document, and the date the document was completed in front of a notary public. After I was able to look at all of that, you'll see that the first three are the same. I'll briefly go over those. Name and location of employee for Western Surety, for both are Larry Caston of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, being the vice president of the company. Under that, you'll see that in both bonds, the type of business being secured by this bond is a second-hand motor vehicle dealer. And once again, similar to the first page, you'll see the bond number staying the same. After that, you will see about halfway down, the company name and dollar amount secured. In the original document, it's Dasa Motors, Inc. You'll see in the document submitted to the town, it's Web Motors Group, Inc. And the date, the corporate seal of Western Surety was actually stamped on the document by Western Surety, you'll see in the original document to be August 19th, '24, whereas in the one submitted to the town, again, October 1st, '24. Lastly, you will see the date that the document itself was completed in front of a notary public, again, to be August 19th for the original date, and October 1st for the actual date submitted to the town. Upon full review of the second page, out of the six possible spots where documentation could have been changed, three were changed to different information. Briefly speaking on the third page, if you scroll to the third page on that second packet, the one that was legitimate Western Surety bond, you'll see it's a very quick synopsis of the company insuring it, the company being insured, the bond number again, and the amount of premium being paid by this company every month, $250 for the premium. There was no Page 3 submitted by Glossial. So, in... Out of the first two pages, just to reiterate, eight out of 12 sections that could have been changed were changed, two-thirds. I have one more thing to give you guys. This one should be a little easier to pass out, I apologize.
It's all right.
I think again, seven copies. I've labeled them on the top left, the 1 through 5.
And this is the Town of Lunenburg Business Entity?
Yes, so, out of the, said, about 48 to 50 pages, I believe, submitted to the town originally, two of which were those two bond documents we went over, Page 1 and 2. These are other documents in the application itself that I think are also relevant. So, if we could skip Page 1, I think that is best for last. If we could start on Page 2 through 4, so Page 2, 3, and 4. On the submitted document you were looking at, titled Business Entity Summary, as well as a similar document under it, for Page 2, 3, and 4, Glossial appears as all four positions in the business. That's President, Treasurer, Secretary, and Director, leaving sole power of the LLC to Glossial and showing Glossial should know all documents submitted and their validity to the town. If you would... If you would go to the final page, Page 5, on the submitted form, "A License to Buy, Sell, Exchange, and Assemble Secondhand Motor Vehicles or Parts thereof", Glossial once again is noted as the President, Secretary, and Treasurer, all three possible spots on the page, showing Glossial should know, again, all documents submitted and their validity. And if we can go back to Page 1, which I believe is the most important, on the document, Town of Lunenburg Business Identity Certificate, Glossial appeared in front of Ellen Griffin, notary public, and verified through his Massachusetts driver's license, made oath, you'll be able to see that in the last major paragraph on the bottom, "Made oath that the foregoing statements are true", that was also submitted in this document. As of right now, this is a ongoing investigation, but as of right now, that is what I have to present to the town.
All right. Thank you, Officer Hill. Are there any questions for Officer Hill?
I do. Officer Hill, are you aware of, or can you speak to any relationship between the business owner that is listed, I guess a few different entities? The one that's listed on the bond, as well as if there's any connection with the prior business owner of this property that you're aware of?
Yes, there is a few. So if I could start with DASSA Motors, I could only, some things are also still open investigations. I could say that DASSA Motors, when speaking with Western Surety, the actual owner of DASSA Motors, which is where the original document came from, to a Tatiana Olivera, who is associated with the former business conglomerate Maxi Auto at Forty Summer Street. I could also say that I have seen one of the other gentlemen, Sidney Fernandez de Souza, who also is a part of the conglomerate of Maxi Auto, to have been at Forty Summer Street with Mr. Olivera during my routine patrols.
All right, I have one more question regarding the Lemonster location. Do you have any knowledge whether that business is operating, where this bond was?
To my knowledge, it was, it was shut down by the City of Lemonster.
And then, just one question real quick.
Sure.
Jen, what did you say?
Yes.
You want to do a timeline?
So through you, do you remember roughly when you saw Mr. Fernandez at this location?
No, ma'am. I could, I could ballpark it for two to three months ago.
Okay.
But I wouldn't be able to give an exact date, unfortunately.
Sorry.
But that's it. Those are all the questions I have for now.
And this is an ongoing investigation, you said?
Correct.
For Forty Summer Street?
Yes.
And the Lemonster, DASSA Motors?
I'm, I'm not sure on the Lemonster one, that'd be a different.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm.
I thought you said there was.
So it, to my knowledge, DASSA Motors has already been shut down. Or rather, denied ability to even start by the City of Lemonster. But I'm not sure if, if it's an ongoing investigation or if it's done.
Michael Wright? All right, I don't have any questions for you either, Officer Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Before we go back to the applicant, this is a public hearing, so I want to ask, are there any other members of the public who would like to comment at this time? All right, seeing none, the applicant, if you'd like to come back up? I'm sorry. I can't tell if there was someone in the public who was raising their hand? And there is. I apologize. Someone in the public would like to speak. So we'll come back to you. You can stay there for a second, but just FYI. All right, Mr. Bowen, go ahead.
Hi, hello. John Bowen, 162 Highlands Street. So I've been watching this situation since I believe it was September, sometime last year, with the other, and previous owner, and the reports that were made with regard to that particular individual being stripped from having RMV plates and so on and so forth, as a result of failing to follow certain process. What I'm looking at here, and this is either nor, for, or against whatever decision the board decides to make tonight, but what I'm looking at here is, is I'm looking at an individual who's trying to open a business and trying to separate himself from all the other issues that the officer brought up. The company, DASSI Motors, the documentation, which I know he affixed his signature to it, that can be corrected in testimony, and, and, you know, as well as, you know, the additional documentation that's being presented. So I'm neither for nor against what's happening here, but I think that the board really needs to look at is, ask the question, does this man want to have nothing to do with the former Mackey Motors, DASSI Motors, and all these other people? And is he totally separated from them personally to having any kind of business to be done in Lunenburg? And if that's the case, then I think that the fair application for this board to look at would be, is this man trying to operate a business? Maybe was bamboozled, because I know, Mr. Jeffries, you said something at one point in time to this gentleman at a hearing back, back last year, that it looked like he fell into a situation where somebody else knew more than he was and was trying to take advantage of him. And I think that this board really needs to have to remember that in doing that. The police did not say there are any charges pending against Mr. Olivera. There are no charges pending against DASSI Motors. There are no charges pending against Mackey Motors, but there are, the last I heard, charges pending against the former owner of Mackey Motors, which is the Tatiana folks. I, I can't remember the last name offhand, okay? But I think that this board really needs to look at that, and whether or not this gentleman is trying to separate himself, maybe he had made some paper errors, qualify whether or not the document that was presented and edited came from DASSI Motors, or it came from the Tatiana people, and he just submitted it inadvertently, trying to get this done and trying to follow the process. He's here with no representation of an attorney, and he should be given the benefit of the doubters law. He was a pro se litigant in court, where there should be a little leeway and understanding, trying to help find out what the issues are, to be able to assist the person in being able to formulate a direction for where they want to be in town. Because from the presentation from the Police Department, it just sounds wicked scathing and one-sided, and the key.
Mr. Bowen, I just want to remind you that you've taken a lot of time, if you want to just wrap up your comment, but I thank you for your participation.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep. Was that it? Sorry, I didn't hear the end of that.
No, that's it. Yeah, no, no, thank you very much. I, I did, and thank you very much for bringing that up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowen. All right. So if you'd like to come back up? Go ahead.
So what we just heard from the Lunenburg Police Department was that we received that you, in your application packet, provided, I'm gonna hand it to you, this form. Do you recall doing that?
No.
I'm muted.
No.
No, he doesn't recall.
You don't recall doing that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I think that what we will find, in fact, is that the communications that our office received was, in fact, this form. And, you know, we didn't just make this up. Right? And we had to get it from somewhere. And it's certainly favorable to your business, but you don't recall ever seeing this form. You don't recall.
Now, what I did was, it was online, but Travelers, including for security bond direct.
What is this, actually? Is the, is the bond?
Yes, the Western Surety bond.
So he's saying that he did the bond online, and that's why he's telling me right now. So he doesn't quite remember about this document, but he said that he did everything online, and he has the name, name of the company, which is Travelers. It's the name of the company that he did the bond.
It's online.
Everything's fine, everything's.
Can I jump in with a question here? Were you the only one that worked on this application packet that was submitted?
Si.
Yeah, he was the only one applying online.
Okay.
For the, the bond.
Who, sure. I'm talking about specifically all of that as well, but also who specifically submitted the application packet to our office? Because we've received two applications.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
You can translate that first.
The application, he said, he, he sent himself.
Okay.
Okay.
So you sent both of the applications, then?
Yeah, he, he said he did the application by himself, but he doesn't recall that specific document, and he's saying that he applied for the bond, which, with this company online. That's what he's saying.
All right, you can continue with your questions.
Yep. May I ask Officer Hill a question?
Do you need to do it right now?
For clarity, it would be helpful, which is, the question is, how did this, if he's aware of how this came into our possession?
Okay. If you don't mind, I'm gonna ask Officer Hill to come back up, and then we'll get back to you after that question, okay?
Yes, sir, could you repeat the question?
Yep. The question is, for the initial bond that you indicated appears to be manipulated, are you aware of how it came into the possession of the Town of Lunenburg?
Yes, it was submitted in the original Class II License Application and submitted to Ann Aubrey with the Town Hall.
Do you know if that was emailed or hand-delivered?
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you can come back up now.
Unfortunately for me, this is really straightforward. You know, the burden of proof in this case is, right, preponderance of the evidence, right? I mean, that's generally what I think our goal is here, is to give you reasonable, is to be reasonable and say, you know, more likely than not is kind of the standard, and, and, you know, and that's kind of what it is, right? I don't know if you, if you're following me on this. In this case, what you have is you have a police officer who has met a much higher burden, which is beyond a reasonable doubt. There is no question in anyone's mind, I'm sure here, and maybe we can do it, but there's no question that this Western Surety Company bond that we're looking at is a fraudulent document. I mean, that's beyond a reasonable doubt. That thing that has been pretty clearly established tonight, given the testimony that indicates that the company provided the correct bond with the correct same number, it's pretty self-evident, as you look at this, the areas that have been changed, comparing them to the original, they're very clearly manipulated. Yep. Yep, if, I'll stop there if you want to translate. So I, I don't know if there's much more to talk about here tonight. I mean, I, I think that when you submit fraudulent documents to request a license, the answer is no. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. But I think we have to still formally take a vote. But that's around that. No way.
All right, any other questions from the other members?
I don't have any other questions.
No.
My feelings are the same.
Yep, Renee?
No questions.
Okay. All right. All right, I don't have any other questions, so thank you. No more. Sorry, what?
Can he ask something?
Yes.
Yeah, he's trying to digest what you guys said, because he's been waiting for like the five, the past five months, paying all the bills and waiting, you know, to get approved, but like you guys said, you guys have this document, which, as you said, suggests that it's fraudulent, so he, he, he just wants to understand why, you know, but yeah, there's no more explanation. Thank you, guys.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time. All right. It doesn't sound like it, but I just want to confirm, you can sit down now. Thank you. I just want to confirm, is there any more information that the board wants in this process? All right, is there a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing?
Still moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes, and we can now discuss and make a decision.
Would you like for me to make the motion?
Yeah, it sounds like we have the decision already. Anything else that anyone wants to say at this point?
Do you have anything else to add?
Uh, just that any motion be in the positive?
The positive, I know, I was gonna say that.
And then, and then allow the discussion to form from there.
All right.
Yep. Is there a motion?
How do you posit?
Move to approve for discussion purposes.
You moved to approve?
I moved to approve for, I moved to approve, I'll, I'll just word it that way. I moved to approve the, let me get the, Class II Auto Dealer License at Forty Summer Street to Glossial Bueno de Oliveira, doing business as Webb Motors Group, Inc.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Yes. You know, I, I think that all business owners first, people make mistakes when it comes to paperwork. That's normal, and I think that in the course of actions, that people should be provided with a fair opportunity to correct errors. In this case, this does not appear to be an error. It appears to be a very deliberate misrepresentation of a financial document multiple times over, while in the submission to a government entity to request a license. I'm not sure of how many crimes were violated, but I think that what we heard tonight was that the applicant should have known that the information was false that they presented. You know, in turn, I don't want to get too heavy into elements of crimes here, but I think that the Police Department established that there should have been awareness on the part of the applicant to take responsibility for the accuracy of all documentation that was provided, being the sole owner, treasurer, president, everything for the company, acknowledged that they provided the documentation. So there was awareness of the act, there was the act itself, and I think it's, it's self-evident, based on communications and conversations in the course of the police investigation, that the actual document was provided. When comparing the two to each other, I don't think we need to be experts to identify what appears to be clear manipulation. Unfortunately, if there, our action here tonight is only on the license, but I certainly hope that we need to discourage other applicants from engaging in this kind of criminal activity in the future.
All right, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no.
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 The motion fails four to zero. All right, glad we got that correctly.
So Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant, the office will reduce the decision to writing and mail that via regular and certified mail to the applicant, so they will receive a formal decision, and now you can fully close the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Jen. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Would you like to summarize for the applicant that essentially this is a denial, just to be clear?
Yes. This was a denial of your application. Sorry to convey that to you. Like the Town Manager just said, they will send you an official notice of that denial.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now closed. All right, we're gonna jump down to old business. We're gonna go to Carr Avenue. So we did have an email from Myleene, the Treasurer, who answers some of our questions from last week, not foreclosed on yet, but the tax title attorney said the town can now file the motion for general default to the land court. In addition to that memo, there was another one from Jen that I didn't have a chance to read. So would you be willing to give us that update?
So my apologies to the board for the lateness of documents coming into your packet, but, so, so the first, there were a number of questions last week about the status of 56 Carr Avenue. How much time do we have? What is the process going forward? So first, as Mr. Chairman stated, the, the town has filed the foreclosure, and nothing will happen until a motion for general default is filed, which has not happened. and nothing will happen until a motion for general default is filed, which has not happened yet, okay? The second question was if the town decides to retain the property, must the town retain the property into perpetuity? Or is there a certain amount of time that you can hold it and then later decide to sell the property? The statute does not require the town to retain the property for any period of time. However, tax title council suggests that the town does retain, if the choice is to retain the property, that the town does hold the property for a minimum of 12 months. So that if there is any dispute as to the surplus, that there is that time to file that in the courts. In terms of cost to retain the property, the appraisal was estimated at $300 to $500. Legal costs are $500 and then whatever the insurance company would add for adding this to our general policy. And the final question was, does the board have a deadline to make the decision whether to sell or retain the property? And that question really turns on, is there a timeline ticking under which council needs to file that motion for general default? The answer is no. So there is no deadline. However, once they do proceed, that's when the clock starts ticking. The foreclosure will take a couple of weeks. And then, once the judgment finally issues, then, then the process to sell or hold really kicks in. So council was suggesting that some of that work and that decision-making happen beforehand so that you can get a run on that. But certainly, if you want to hear from other entities in town, you have the opportunity to just continue this matter.
Any questions for Jen? Any discussion on this tonight? All right. Discussion on workplace climate survey policy, so I think we should just hold off until next week when we have the full board. But we do have the red line version with all the changes tracked in here.
Thank you, Renee and Amanda.
I didn't do it.
Thank you whomever.
You're welcome.
Was it you?
Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
It was word.
He's technically challenged, he doesn't understand that.
I'm really not technically challenged.
Hey, you always say that you are.
I'm Google challenged.
Okay. All right, moving on, discussion on select warrant town manager goal setting process, not doing that. Review and discussion on budget task force recommendations. So Renee, we discussed this. We went through recommendation by recommendation last week. I know you had a chance to watch it because you sent us that memo on the audit and some of the reasonings for why staff members wanted that. Did you want to speak to that?
What can I say? The memo's in here, right?
Well, first, Switzerland, good.
Well, Switzerland's good work is work. Yeah, so, so this initially came up in a budget task force meeting when we were looking at, you know, revenues and expenses and pulling up a lot of data from DLS. And we found a category called miscellaneous non-recurring expense, revenue.
Revenue.
And looking over the years, it was about, I think, a million. And then 2015, 2016, it dropped by like 400,000 and it stayed down. And the question was, what happened? What was that? Can we get that money back? Is it just an accounting change? Couldn't answer it. And that's how the audit started coming up to do. And just with all the transition, new people, all the list of accounts, it was just really challenging to get a clear picture of everything. And actually, Tony Scollinbrini, the chair, suggested a, coming from his attorney background, what did he call it? A forensic audit. Which he's worked with people who have done it for different reasons in his line of work. And it can be very expensive, very, very expensive. Pay hourly, these people have very high hourly rates who do this type of work. So we were saying, we need to be really, if we're going to do this, we need to be really focused with clear questions, define scope, so the cost doesn't get out of hand. And so Ezzy and Dr. Gilson proposed, they drafted a memo to focus on what they thought were the main points to be covered by this audit. And there are one, two, three, four, five specific areas. And it is mostly process focus, I would say. The five areas being staffing, looking at the structure of wages, processing of wages and hours. Technology, so this was around munis and other systems. Payment timelines, process mapping. So look at current processes for revenue recognition, expense tracking. We've heard that there's quite a delay in seeing monies hit our books. And then interdepartmental communication, again, around processes and efficiency gains. So this, that was the memo that financial folks are both, you know, school and town side are proposing. We didn't get as far as to find a potential company. I don't even know of any. Or, so we don't have, I think in the recommendations, Ezzy may have put some kind of placeholder cost in there, maybe? I'm not 100% sure, I don't remember. So that's where the audit came from.
All right. Thank you, Renee. Any questions before we continue for Renee on the audit? All right. Renee, was there anything else that you wanted to share with us after watching our discussion since you weren't there?
Um, I'm trying to think back because I also caught the school committee four hour meeting in between things going on. I don't think, there was something else that came up around the budget. Oh, the CPA.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth taking a deeper dive. I mean, I know the baseline round one funding of this year was 18%. And I look back and I think the lowest I saw for round one was 13% over the years. But of course, if you do the 3% contribution, the full amount, you have, you're eligible for round two. So you can get much more. I think that's worth a lengthier discussion, a more in-depth discussion. It's not something that would help us this year for sure, and even next year, we wouldn't see money. But doesn't mean we shouldn't put it in place. And if I remember, town manager probably knows better than I do. If I remember right, it does have to go to a town meeting as well as a ballot.
Yep.
So even if it went to fall town meeting, we'd still have to come to.
I don't believe we can even do it at fall town meeting. I think it has to be the annual town meeting.
It has to be annual?
I can look into it, but sometimes there is a timing between the ballot vote.
The vote has to happen, the ballot vote has to happen a certain amount of time after the meeting. So I don't think it's worth having a special election for it. But I think that is something we should look at. And there's so much data and history on that, that I think we can get a really good feel. My only concern with that one is, so there's the three buckets that you have to contribute at 10% minimum to each and then the remaining 70% you can distribute how you want. The housing assistance, that's the one that's a question for me. But I do think it can be applied to rental assistance.
If I may, communities use that bucket of money for all sorts of things. Sometimes they use it for their affordable housing monitoring to make sure that you're compliant and that transactions aren't happening without the knowledge of the community. You can use it for consulting, to work on plans for construction. So it's not, it doesn't mean that it needs to be turned into actual housing. But it's work in the affordable housing sector.
And I know that the tool, like the database online, you can see the projects, types of projects that have been approved. But again, any, any project that would be proposed would have to be proposed by the CPA committee and then it has to be voted on at a town meeting. So the town has to vote for any spending of that money. So, I mean, we can talk about what the timing would look like. Is that something we want to bring forward next annual town meeting?
I'm interested in pursuing it.
I want to, I do too. I think the question is the timing.
Yeah, exactly. And something else, and based on, I spoke about this last week and having conversations with both Carter and Jen, something that's really critical in getting this to pass is having that grassroots energy to get it passed. And I tried to identify that, I couldn't find it. So that was one of the reasons why I didn't think it was going to move forward this year either. So that's also really important to have.
So the last time it came up, and I forget the year, it was Historical Commission. A woman who was chair, I know, I have her name, my notebook is at home. She presented on behalf of the Historical Commission and did a lot of research. So I don't know if she's still in town, is still interested, but maybe that's an avenue to pursue, to gain a grassroots effort.
Okay. All right. So I mostly wanted to give you an opportunity to just add any information based on your watching of our meeting last week. But I think we should pick this up and start again next week when we have the full board here. Is there anything else you want to discuss tonight? All right. All right, thank you, Renee. Moving on to current business, we have a review of the ARPA press release. So I dropped that in the drive and I'll just pull it up. Town of Lunenburg announces American Rescue Plan Act allocations. The American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, was signed into law in 2021 and provided states and municipalities across the country with a historic opportunity to invest in their communities. Designed to address the economic and public health challenges caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and allow communities to make long-term investments in local services and infrastructure, ARPA funding enabled local governance to support essential services both during and after the public health emergency, strengthen infrastructure, improve services, and promote long-term recovery and resilience. The town of Lunenburg received $3,507,970.58 in total from ARPA. For Lunenburg, this funding represented an unprecedented investment in public safety, education, infrastructure, and community services. Over the course of several years, the select board solicited proposals from town departments, boards, and community organizations and carefully allocated these funds to address immediate needs caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, while also making strategic investments that will benefit the town long-term. From upgrading public safety equipment to supporting local nonprofits, ARPA allowed the town to take on projects that would have otherwise been financially challenging. With the December 2024 deadline for allocation now passed, the town of Lunenburg is sharing a full breakdown of how these funds were distributed. And I'm not going to read through line by line.
All right. Thank you for pulling this together. I think that this is very much so in line with what I hope we would issue. My only comments and feedback is in this intro, typically when we write town, town is capitalized.
Capitalize, I know, I saw, I missed one.
And then, in the last paragraph where it says with the December deadline, I would delete that entire paragraph and just say that the select board allocated ARPA funds, you know, in the following ways, or this is how we did it.
Okay.
Wherever you want to, but I would just skip, you know, summarize that. I would also increase the font size, knowing that this will likely be printed in the newspaper. You know, is, you know, kind of bigger font if possible. So that way, you know, it's just formatted with the paper to fit on a full page, half a page. Even if that means putting columns in here, so that way, you know, when it gets blown up, it makes more sense. But it seems like a full page ad. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any other feedback?
No, I think it's great to communicate with the public where all the money went. It's actually, it's a nice list.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good list and some of the changes with the vice chair.
Okay. So the only substantial one was changing that last sentence. Are we okay with that?
Formatting however it fits.
All right, so I can do that and then we can revisit it next week too, and Tom's here as well. Or I don't feel strongly either way. We can approve it now with those changes.
I don't know if Tom's going to make a significant change.
And at the same time, I don't know, waiting a week really matters. So.
Yeah, give him a week.
Give him a chance.
Okay. Got to include him in this.
This is a good point.
He does tend to have edits, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Linguistically opinionated. All right. All right, thank you very much for reviewing. All right, moving on to discussion on FY 2025 budget, FY 2026 budget, capital plan, and annual town meeting warrant articles. All right, so first, I'll say that I know that there's a lot of attention on the budget process right now, and there should be. I'm glad that that attention is there, given that the school budget is starting off with such a large deficit. I know it concerns a lot of people. It concerns me too. And I'm glad to see the people who were showing up last year are showing up this year as well. I do want to point out though, that it's still very early in the process. The superintendent is still actively revisiting what proposed cuts would look like. The deficit of 3.5 million was a worst-case scenario. It didn't include any grant money from the federal government. I know people are concerned about that. They have a right to be. But if we get those grants, that'll shrink the gap considerably. At the same time, our town manager, who has only been with us for one week now, talk about baptism by fire, is working diligently to understand the full financial picture and balance the many needs of our town. Once we have a clearer sense of what the proposed budget looks like, we'll be in a better position to evaluate how we want to move forward. But I want people to understand, just like last year, the process has to play itself out. It will be collaborative, I hope respectful, and we are just getting started. So Jen, I will pivot over to you now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as, as the chairman stated, you know, I walked into this budget process with the process being fully underway. And I understand that some deadlines were already established prior to my arrival. And the simple reality is, is that by February 13th, which is on Thursday, we are not going to have a preliminary budget presentation. And so I want to talk a little bit about the process of where, where things were before I arrived and where things have gone and why there is going to be that time needed. So the interim town manager did solicit from all department heads their budget requests, explaining the financial conditions of the community. Those requests came in throughout the month of January and there were many, many meetings with the various stakeholders about those requests. During the transition, not all of that was reduced to a spreadsheet. So, but a lot of good work was done. There were a lot of good conversations. And so what I am doing is trying to understand what those conversations have been, what has already been decided, what's still in flex. And it was just until the end of last week that the accounting department got in all of the departmental requests. So let me just kind of frame for folks that this is going to be a marathon and a sprint, but that, that there is not going to be any final answers until we are much closer to town meeting. So starting off with the revenue budget that Carter had put together for the community, I'm just going to highlight, and you have the revenue budget in your packet. I will have this in a presentation form for the finance committee on Thursday. But all told, the total new revenues, which I think is what most people care about, right? The total new revenues for fiscal year 2026 is $1,241,754. Now, there are assumptions that go into building the revenue estimate. And this is why this is still going to be a moving target. I'd like to do some more analysis on the following. Local receipts. I want to make sure that we're not being overly conservative, but also cognizant of the difficult economic climate. People may not be building as much over the next year or buying as many vehicles. So I want to make sure that that number's solid. The, also, the new growth figure was done by an average. Similarly, I don't know if we are going to realize that level of new growth. So I'd like to do some more analysis on that. And the overlay figure of $250,000, the Board of Assessors has not yet voted on. So that, they did not think, it's unlikely to go up, but it could go down. So this is the number though that we're using right now and we're basing things off of. In, I know that there has been discussion of the amount of funds that were given out of In, I, I know that there has been discussion of the amount of funds that were given out of this new money to, to the school department. And that was done by taking the total percentage breakdown. So the town departments receive 42% of the budget, the school receives 55% of the budget, and tech school 3%. And allocating that 1.2, I'm just going to call it 1.2 million dollars proportionally across those breakdowns. So speaking to the town side, that means on revenue, excess revenue, we have $520,000 to spend. We have preliminary figures from our, now, there's, there's major drivers for the, for the budget, the largest of which is health insurance. So we have preliminary figures that we are looking at for town actives and retirees of a 16% increase. That 16% does not get applied across the entire health insurance line. There's some formulas behind that, but were we to apply it across the whole line, which is, we're not going to be that far off from this number, that's $489,000 right there.
$489?
$489,000. Worcester County retirement has an increase of $264,000. So between those two alone, without, we have several bargaining units that will be bargaining with us. We have other costs that are increasing because that's, that's, we are in, still in an inflationary time, costs are not going down. We, we will far exceed the additional $520,000 that has been apportioned. There are ways that we can make this work, I believe, but I think it's premature to talk about those at this time until we do some more analysis. So the revenue picture is not good all around. So we'll, we'll leave it at that for revenues. Expenditures, we are compiling. I, I do not think that we will have, what I'm trying to get to is what the delta is that we're trying to close, and then look at how, what can be cut to close that gap. But cuts are likely in some areas, even if that means to the capital program, which I'm going to switch over to in a moment, right now. So the interim town manager had been working on a capital plan and has vetted most of that through the Capital Planning Committee. I, I did have a conversation with the chair last week, and there were a few changes, but he understood them. So the total capital plan as proposed is 1.2, 1.225 million. However, that uses, transfers from previous capital articles, free cash, but it also uses about $225,000 in taxation. And that is from the reduction that we're paying on debt service. I understand the logic behind it, like and like, but I don't know if we're going to need to pull some of that into the operating to fund the operating. So the capital plan itself remains a moving target. In addition to the regular capital plan, there are some one-time items that are living outside of the capital plan. So there's some, that are being funded, proposed to be funded with free cash. And that is decommissioning of TC Passios, cemetery road network repairs, and a small amount of funds to, for the assessors to meet some of those DOR requirements that they, they have to meet. Additionally, we have a snow and ice deficit, which we always do. That's how snow and ice budgeting works, you run it, it's the only budget that you can run in deficit. And you can never underspend the line, or else you get yourself in trouble. So it's healthy to be in a deficit position as a community. But we're looking at about $350,000 transfer to cover that from free cash.
That's to date?
No, that's projected.
Okay.
No, we just went into.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fair, fair question. As we still have many months of winter left to go, that's an absolutely fair question. We just went into deficit spending. But that's, 350 is based on an estimate. Again, if we, by May, we're going to know what ours, I would hope that we would know what our final snow and ice is, and that it's not still snowing in May, but that number could come down. We have as well a FEMA grant that was overspent that we need to cover for $36,000. So this remains very much in flex. The town has financial policies in place that speak to our contributions to our various stabilization accounts, our OPEB contributions. I know that folks often want to look to free cash as an answer to operational budget problems. What, free cash is one-time money, and it should be used on one-time things. And there is a reason that we put money into these different account types. So with that, I am working the staff very diligently on getting some better products so that we can have a robust conversation and have a lot of engagement with the community on this. This, the budget document is living and breathing, and sometimes lives and breathes right up until town meeting when motions are changing. And I very much anticipate that, based on the financial constraints that Lunenburg is in, and we're not special, municipalities across the Commonwealth are facing these same issues, that we are going to continue to adjust this budget as we go. I look forward to the collaboration. I am glad to see that residents are engaged early. I want them to be asking us the difficult questions. And, and I think, though, until we get balanced on the town side, we can't really engage until we know where we're at. And so through you, to the public, I ask for some leeway that allow us to do the diligence that we need to do to get some better figures prepared, and so that we can start to make informed decisions.
Well, I'm more than willing to give you that leeway as one person here, but we'll open it up to any other questions.
I think, I thank you for that report. You've obviously done an immense amount of work already, looking into, you know, where we're at and where these difficult conversations that we're going to have. So I appreciate even the amount of detail that you've been able to prepare, having been here for a week and picking up in this challenging time. So I, I think, you know, we as a board and the school committee, and, you know, the town manager and superintendent, we know we've got some work to do. But I think that, you know, collaboratively, we're going to do our best to get there.
For sure.
So I thought last year was hard. This year is looking, not, not because the numbers are bigger, not only because the numbers are bigger, but the timing. The warrant closes March 17th. If we need to bring it over forward, we don't have much time. That, that was part of the problem last year from the town side of, of not being able to get an override to get, you know, an all-encompassing, because we didn't, I mean, to throw a number out there is so irresponsible. I don't, I don't have any answers, but can we get there? When, when do you think, like, what, what's, what's the timeline? What, what's, what's it look like?
Well, I think a couple of things. So just because an warrant article lives on the warrant, it doesn't mean that it, it's not passed over at town meeting. So that's certainly an option, but we would need to have a figure for that.
That's, yeah.
The figure is, I'm speaking a little off the cuff, so I, I believe that this is correct. I think that the figure needs to be quantified in the ballot question, but does not need to be quantified in the warrant article, it lives in the motion, I believe. I can double-check that, but I think that that's really the only issue, is the figure. My preference, and, and this is me speaking very new to the community and not having a full history here, is that although this year may be extremely difficult, that we look at a comprehensive five-year outlook, and we really take the time to build on the efforts of the Budget Task Force, the work that's already been done. We have some real conversations about where we can gain efficiencies by consolidating potentially departments, and that we look for next year. In saying that, I'm sitting on this side, and I can, I think I can close our budget. I'm not sitting in the superintendent's chair with her difficulties that she's facing. So let's, I think, I think, like the chairman indicated, that was the worst-case scenario budget. Just like my health insurance figure is the worst-case scenario, the governor's budget is typically the worst-case scenario, not that we're going to get a whole, a lot of additional state aid, but items tend to become better as we get closer to town meeting.
That's the hope. I mean, I know that this, you know, superintendent, school committee has work to do on their budget. We obviously don't have a budget yet.
Right.
So obviously have work to do. And, you know, to come, I, I think, I think most people want to see a comprehensive outlook. We learned last year that it's not so easy to do. At least, I think, one great outcome of the Budget Task Force was to get everyone talking, to share information, to collect it. And maybe that's just the foundation to, to move on from there. I would like to see this board and the school committee work together during this budget season, whether that means having some joint meetings, a joint workshop, something.
I'll just say, if I can just jump in real quickly, I'm in communication with the chair pretty frequently. I do want us to work collaboratively. If that means joint meetings, and that's what we decide, then that's what we'll do, so.
Yeah, and whether, you know, FinCom too.
I know several communities do joint meetings. It would be a benefit, my opinion is it would be beneficial to have us all talking together.
I think it's, it's when, how soon can we, you know, have something more concrete to, to really work on?
I, I, but it's not just from, it's, it's also the school. I'm thinking March would be sometime in March. You still have, you still have a lot of time before town meeting.
Before town meeting, sure, but it's.
Before the warrant closes is really the.
Yeah, that, if we need to do something, and that was the issue last year.
Well, go ahead.
I mean, we have, first, thank you, Jen, for all the information that you provided. I agree with Amanda that it seems as if you have a pretty good grasp of what kind of lays ahead. You know, speaking broadly, you know, it, I, I want to tag onto something that selectman Imke said about responsibility here. You know, if we are facing a significant budget cut on municipal services, non-school education, I think any business, any organization looking at cuts, the reasonable approach first is across the board. You know, I think that, you know, for us to come out and say, hey, we have a budget shortfall, so we're not going to plow the roads, and we're cutting the police department, that is going to outrage everybody. I think for the school department superintendent office to say that we have a budget shortfall and we're cutting elementary school teachers, to me, that's a little emotionally manipulative, is how it looks to me. Because I think that the bigger question is, well, what does across the board look like? You know, in order for us to have these conversations, we have to come to the table reasonable. And that means that look across at your admins and say, you know, they got to get hit too. And I think what I heard coming out of the school meeting last week was a dire situation, but I think the phraseology of it, how it was targeted, I, I think we can, if we're going to, if we're going to work together, it means let's be reasonable here as we try to work together. And let's not enrage every parent out there by saying that the kids that are the most vulnerable are going to be the target of the first in how we try to bridge this gap. I think we need to keep everything on the table in having this conversation. But again, I offer that opinion, I know someone's going to call me pissed off and upset because I know we got to work together, and how dare I? But, you know, I, I just think it's, it's, it's just, it's challenging to have these calls. We know that, hearing the parents, seeing the emails that we've already started receiving, you know, it's, we don't have built-in advocates. Our role as members of the Select Board and, and the town manager, yes, we have big picture, big town, but we advocate for the departments that we have some oversight over collectively. You know, we advocate for the police, we advocate for the DPW, we advocate for the library, we advocate for conservation, all those different functions, those municipal functions that are noneducational, that the school does is what our role is, and, and the best we can work together. But I, you know, one thing that I said last year, and I will say it and keep saying it, and, and again, I'm just going to keep saying it, which is every single department, with the exception of the school department, is dealing with increased customers. A 20% increase in customers over the last 20 years. The school department's dealing with a decrease in customers. So there has to be a better explanation of where all this cost is going. I think it's, nobody wants to be in a situation where eight-year-olds have 35 kids in a classroom. That's unacceptable, we all agree on that one. No one wants to be in a situation where we got to cut 30 teachers, we all agree on that one. But if we're going to be cutting 30 teachers, not saying we're going to. If the conversation is that we're cutting teachers, the conversation needs to be admins too. It needs to be administrative personnel, it needs to be across the board, let's figure out how we do this. And then we can have, again, these better conversations. So I think that as we move forward, you know, we've talked about for years, but I'm going to give a couple of areas that specifically I would like for there to be better conversation on, which is why does the health insurance live inside of every department's individual budget? That it seems that if we have town employees, if health insurance was pulled out, and we're investing in the health insurance of our employees, that we can have a better conversation about what's left over. Is that 1%? Is that 1.5%? Is it half a percent? But I think health insurance as a whole, I don't, I don't know why that lives in department budgets. Another area that came out of the Budget Task Force, but we've been saying it for years, why does the school department have their own snow removal crew? Is it cost-effective to consider DPW? And I'm not saying that you don't have a designated crew, but what I'm saying is, are there any cost savings in merging that into the DPW department? The Budget Task Force recommended it, I hope we can have a serious conversation about that. Similarly, with facilities, we know that our buildings are our most expensive thing. Can we get Chris Ruth as the town facility director to do what other communities do and provide that higher level of support to the school department? Will there be some cost savings there? And again, on the HR and procurement side of the house, you know, the, can there be some consolidations there? Now, again, we're not going to find millions of dollars here, but there will be a little bit of money found. And then the, the last area, and I want to encourage any member of the school committee who's hearing me today, I, I, I've said this several times, but I'm going to say it again, we have to look at revenue. Every single parking lot for the schools has like minimal shade on them during the day. They would be great for solar, for solar panels. The Inflation Reduction Act passed in 2022 provides 75% reimbursement to municipalities. We talked about revenue last year. I'd like to know if there has been any effort at all to look into how to generate revenue from those parking lots. Because again, every penny saved is a penny earned. And if we can decrease the electric bill by a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, then we find a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in new funding for, for needed programming. So again, you know, we can't keep being in this crisis every February, March, April, where parents who are doing everything that they can feel like the town is pulling the rug from underneath them, and everyone else is saying, what about me? That we have to work together. But I, I do think that we, we need to really lean in a bit into revenue, and we need to lean into some of these efficiencies that were identified by the, by the Budget Task Force.
Thank you, and we will definitely do our part on that. Jen, do you want to respond to any of that?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Any other members of the board? All right, any other discussion on the budget tonight?
So the agenda for Thursday for FinCom, are you presenting any update or no?
I, I've been in communication with the chair of the Finance Committee to say essentially in private what was said publicly tonight about where we are. I think that I'm not going to, I will not be touching the expenditure side on Thursday. That I, I think we can have some conversations about the revenue estimates, why that's still in flex, and more in-depth conversations about the capital program. and more in-depth conversations about the capital program. There are two departments that are presenting their requests that evening, so that process will continue. But it may, it may come a little bit in piecemeal as we're putting it together. I want to have the information that I'm good with, out and digestible as soon as possible so that people, even if it means that it's coming piecemeal, so that people can really start to wrap their heads around it.
No, and I totally support that, to, to throw something out there, even though you label it preliminary. People don't hear that.
Correct.
I'm just asking if maybe they should revise the agenda that's posted, just to manage the public's expectations.
I was, I was hopeful that in, that the chair would have picked up that that was really my press.
Okay, so Chris, revise the agenda.
But I, I think it's going to be pretty informal.
Okay.
Can it be revised now? It's past 48 hours, right?
Oh, you can always be revised. It's been posted. You can always revise it.
Yep. They are all posted, by the way, for the entire budget season.
Yeah. Just so people, because, yeah.
So if, if anybody is listening to this, if they want to put out the word on their different forums and text groups that the town manager is not delivering a full budget presentation on Thursday, so you can, you can stay at home for this Thursday, come maybe next, next week or the week thereafter, but you're not going to learn much more on Thursday. Other than if, if Ezzy can perform some miracles and we might be able to by Thursday know what that gap is that we're targeting.
Well, we know he can perform miracles, but I don't know about that one.
Yeah, Ezzy worked really hard in the task force.
And, and he's been working really, really hard on the budget, so.
I, I, if I may, as a final comment, I think, you know, we all try to do the best work we can, but, you know, this situation with the school budget, let, I, I can't state how serious this is. You know, we lose faith, trust, confidence in the, in everything we do as a government if we cannot meet the needs of those who cannot advocate for themselves. You know, putting children, tomorrow's generation, in a worse situation than the one that we ourselves are in, that, that is an unacceptable situation to be in, period. So I, I just want to stress that I think that the, this bridge must be, must be built. We must find a way to, to bridge this divide. But again, if I can also stress, you know, to, to everyone who can hear me, it doesn't matter how much great work we do, if, if we lose 30 teachers from the school department, what was the point of any of it? Because we've lost the community at that point. When you lose the parents and you lose the trust that we can all engage reasonably, you know, this is what, this is when people feel government in their lives. A lot of people don't have, don't interact with the building commission. They don't interact unless they're building, right? They don't, they don't interact with the tax collector if they're paying their mortgage, you know, every month and it's being paid at escrow. They don't have that daily interaction. But people interact with the school department. That is, just like we interact with our roads, that, you know, that this is one of those areas where it's just so critical that we don't have our parents in a situation where, again, two years in a row now, where they don't feel as if the community is looking out for them.
Yep, I agree, and we will do our part as a board to engage collaboratively in this process with the school committee, the finance committee, and the public as well. All right, any other comments on the budget tonight? All right, moving on to the warrant. There is a draft warrant. Do we want to take some time reviewing it on our own and then start going through it next week when we have the full board?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to review it.
Yep.
Yeah, me.
I'm happy to, I'll defer to whatever the board prefers. I'm happy to just go very high level of what the different articles are. I'm wanting to make sure with that internal deadline that we had, that I've, I've reached out to boards, committees, and commissions and department heads, but I want to make sure that I've got everything that folks have submitted, or we can wait till next week.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I think it would be helpful for us to have a full board, but I also think that maybe a little bit further in the process, because something that I think is helpful is to identify if there's anyone with an article that we'd like to meet with before the warrant closes preferably. And in years past where we've done that, it's been helpful to get some changes made before the warrant closes.
Well, we're definitely doing that with the planning board, so that they can come here and explain their articles to us, but if there's anyone else that we want to ask, then we can.
So having just a high-level skim through of, because a lot of these are placeholders, correct?
Some are placeholders, so the.
The ones that aren't placeholders, maybe if the rest of the board doesn't mind.
Do you want to just do the high level? Do you want to run through it real quick?
Yeah, I'll just run through what the basic articles are. So standard article is to accept and hear reports of committees. I think we all know that one. The next two articles are articles that you don't have as standard articles in Lunenburg. There are standard articles that I've used previously, and I did talk to Adam Costa today, and he thought that they were good additions. One is that if for some unforeseen reason, we got into a real cash flow problem, where maybe bills go out late and we're not getting that revenue, it allows us to enter into agreements with banks to borrow in advance of that revenue. Very similarly with Chapter 90 funds, the next article allows us to expend those funds in anticipation of reimbursement. These are both just fail safes, unlikely that we'll have to activate either. We have the standard article to set the spending limits on the revolving funds, but we do not have the establishment of any new revolving funds. Prior year bills, anything that pops up from a prior fiscal year, we will take care of.
I just want to point out, sorry to interrupt, I love that you added this here outstanding invoices known at time of print, because last time we did not have that, and it was a question we got, and we had to wait and get it answered, so thank you.
Yes, so, so I'm going to keep your, the tradition that Carter had started of providing that summary, the written summary in the warrant. I started to work on those in some of these areas. I think it's very helpful when the, a lot of the way these warrant articles are written are not easily digestible by the public and just to have that layman's kind of explanation, I think is important.
Thank you for continuing that.
Authorization to transfer unexpended funds from FY '25, this is, this is just closeout. Somebody was too high, somebody was too low. We're, we're moving within the current fiscal year. And then those three closeouts that I talked about, the FEMA sped in snow and ice. Then we have our FY '26 capital program. There's a separate article for, I think it's $100,000 for the Lunenburg Middle High School Track and Field Complex. I'm unclear as to whether CPC has considered this one yet. We have two potential debt exclusions, one for Marshall Park and one for the municipal building design. Setting the salaries of our elected officials, mending the salaries in the SAP, as well as any title changes or additions there. Also, an amendment to the SAP is a proposal to allow holiday pay for firefighter fighters. And then we get into our standard financial transfers that I spoke about earlier. So free cash to the stabilization fund, free cash to the special purpose stabilization fund and to OPEB. Our retiree benefits. Next, we have a couple standard or typical sewer articles. Sewer contributes to their own OPEB trust fund, their, their enterprise fund. They're going to transfer some funds into the stabilization fund for their capital program. They have an I&amp;I or inflow and infiltration fund. They're going to transfer some funds into there and transfer some funds into their sewer capacity reserve stabilization fund. We have the standard of funding of the trash program, the enterprise fund for solid waste, as well as water enterprise and public access cable enterprise, the PEG, PEG funds. Transfer of cemetery funds. And then there's these three special fund projects that aren't living in the capital, decommissioning of TC Passio Cemetery Road Network and for the assessors. There's three articles coming from planning. One is a requirement of federal law to update our floodplain maps, and then two articles related to the changes to accessory drilling units. There might be a little bit of difficulty I'm hearing in, in them getting finer language. So if there is, I guess the worst-case scenario is although we don't make the change, the, the law is still the law, and it just makes it confusing for folks that are looking to develop and makes the building commissioner's job a little more difficult. But Adam Costa and I, town council, talked today about it, and he's going to perhaps draft it on their behalf and see how they like his draft. Then there are two articles, and I understand the language is going to be changing on these, but two articles from the Board of Assessors where there was a change previously, but inadvertently dropped out cost of living increases. So this is kind of a correction from their previous exemptions. And then there is an article, which I don't fully understand the background of, but it's combining the Historic Commission and Architectural Preservation District. And so there is a very rough draft of that that council has not seen. So that is what I have thus far. If folks are aware of any other articles that are not living on this list, please let me know as soon as possible, and the warrant officially closes on the 17th.
So I do want to ask, because I did hear, watching a committee meeting that submitted articles, that they were a little frustrated with that internal deadline that we sent. That was a little, or actually several, several months stricter than the general deadline. Have you received any communication from anyone who is unhappy with it, would like it to be extended? Or does everyone have at least a draft of the warrant articles and they can then be revised or?
I have not heard any direct communication, but I was in my office while the planning board was discussing their frustration, so I could hear the frustrations.
Yeah.
It was essentially a two-week deadline.
Yeah, so, a couple of things. I think the board, the, this is your warrant. So you can extend the deadline at a future meeting if you want to formally open the internal deadline to a longer date. It could be as long as March 17th. I understand the concern was about getting the items to print. Pretty much, the planning articles are really just titles holding space for them to do their work. So I, I know that the deadline may have felt constrained for folks. I hope that they realize that there is a whole lot of time to make substantive, significant substantive changes prior to the board. I think we've got it scheduled that you're going to have a first vote on March 11th and then a second vote on March 17th.
Yep, we might start voting before that, if we want to do it on a rolling basis, that we're not trying to get them all done at the end, but, yep. I just wanted to bring that up, because I'm okay with getting rid of that artificial internal deadline. So I want other members to think about it too, if it gets to that point for us to consider.
Did we create it or did the town manager do that?
That was, it was Carter's timeline. We reviewed it, we discussed it. He explained his reasoning behind it. There was no discussion, but, you know, kind of looking back, I can understand why people are a little frustrated with that.
I think the issue the planning board had was around the accessory dwellings, the state. At the end of last week.
Yeah, new guidelines. It's still shifting, so they have to adjust that shift in guidelines.
After they had already submitted their draft article, so.
If I can just add on to that, that frustration comment, you know, I had been reaching out to various boards. I had reached out to the Cemetery Commission chair and said, I have these four articles for you. And she said, well, we haven't met to vote on them. And I said, well, they're pretty standard articles, so we're going to just put them on here as a placeholder, and you have plenty, you know, take your vote and circle back. I can always delete something. So, you know, I'm trying to impart to folks, especially if it's a standard article or something like the floodplain, floodplain map, you have time.
All right, thank you, Jen. All right, any other discussion on the warrant tonight? All right, thank you very much. Moving on, minutes, warrants, action items. We don't actually have minutes to review tonight. Warrants, I don't think we have any, right?
Nope.
Any action items? All right, hearing none. Committee reports?
Budget, budget, budget.
Yeah, well, yes. We're tracking that one.
I thought we had an action item tracker that was, came up previously.
Yeah.
Yep, I have not created it yet. I was thinking about it earlier today. I will make it tonight, and we will have that spreadsheet.
You don't need to make it tonight?
Yeah. Well, it got brought up, so I will, I'll do that. Any other action items? All right, thank you. Committee reports?
I think the school committee was covered.
I think so too.
Oh, wait, Stolwater? No, we didn't, we haven't. I covered that the last time. Sorry.
I don't have one for Economic Development Committee. They haven't met yet. And not much on master plan, other than we're waiting for, you know, some information about where we currently stand on the plan. The planning board discussed it at their meeting, and we're still working on meeting at forum, so more to come.
The, I attended the Council of Aging meeting this morning, which was good. I will say, I had to leave several times while I was trying to print something. But, you know, it was wonderful to see the new Counseling Aging Director, Deb. I think they go by the two Debs now, but it was really, it was really good to be a part of the team. I know that they're looking for more volunteers, and they had some leads on other people looking to join the team, which if one of them comes true, it's going to make me really excited. So it was, it was a really good meeting. I did also provide a presentation to them about the municipal building design plan, and generally, they were quite supportive. The library meets on Thursday. I am not sure if I will attend, because I am trying to target the APDC meeting this week.
All right, well, thank you for sharing my Council on Aging meeting for me, because I could not make it this morning. I had a work meeting that I could not get out of, so Michael Ray was there coincidentally, but also on my behalf as well. And the planning board met last night. I was going to bring up the warrant articles, the frustration with that, but we already talked about it as well. And there is a caucus, an MMPO caucus, that I'm going to be attending Wednesday or Thursday night to select the sub-region representative. Whether or not it will be me, I don't know, but I will still tune into those meetings, and that's pretty much it. All right, upcoming meetings, we have one scheduled for next Tuesday, the 18th. Public comment. Any public comment from the town manager?
No.
Any public comment from the public? Glenn?
Good evening. Glenn McLeod, 436 Reservoir Road. One of the problems with doing public comment is when you go home, you realize what you forgot to say. And I forgot to welcome you last week. I apologize. Welcome, thank you. Thank you for coming aboard. So it's interesting, towards the end of your conversation, you're expressing the frustration with the state. And that's the point I want to bring up. It's something I, I don't hear nearly enough about. You know, the state, you know, those who we have elected to represent us on the state simply, in my opinion, are not representing us. And I don't hear enough of that, with the exception recently at the school committee, two of their members, one of which is here, and thank you for, for your words. They, they were spot on. And I, I think with all the talk about affordable housing and all the discussions, and I won't go through them, because everyone's very well aware of the issues confronting this town, is everyone is in support of affordable housing, yet the conversation pivots to making it unaffordable to live in Lunenburg. And that would include people who actually own their own homes can't afford to live, and it's not unique to Lunenburg. And you see every town around us throughout the Commonwealth having the same exact problems. And where is the state? That's who I think the primary target should be for more funding, is the state. The tax dollars that the residents have already paid. To instantly just turn to an override and every other, you know, tool, tool, uh, tool in your toolbox as a government, you know, governments historically aren't great about solving problems. And this is a very serious problem. And the state, from my standpoint, from a, you know, a citizen just watching, they seem to have plenty of money. They do not seem to work with the same fiscal restraint that Lunenburg does and all the other communities around us. And it, and everyone uses the term "the state." I think that's, that's unfortunate. We really should use phrases like "those who we have elected to represent us." They are not representing us. They're causing us to turn on each other. Those of us like myself, who do no longer have children in the school, but we still are committed to the children. I mean, I, I agree with everything that everyone says, and that is what makes this difficult, is nobody is wrong, with the exception of those who we have elected to represent us on the state level. I believe they are wrong. I have had those conversations with Margaret Scarsdale, who is an extremely nice woman, very friendly, and I like her very much. But it's, it's time, and when, when I was speaking with her, I expressed that. But it's, it's time, and when I was speaking with her, I expressed that. It's tough, because I think the Commonwealth is, you know, is neglecting us. So having said that, I'll stop before I keep rambling, but that, I would just like to hear more conversations like the school committee had, because it is not limited to their Chapter 70. It's everything. It's the cherry sheets. You know, they're spending money like it's going out of style while we all struggle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from the public? All right. Not seeing any in the room. Miss, what? Oh, I see him on Zoom. Mr. Bowen?
Well, that was very interesting. So I agree with the last speaker on this. I said this before, and I'll say it again, that we have to find a way in town to move the state out, okay? We rely too much on, can we get a grant where we pay the money and then you reimburse us? Can you give us money to be able to do this? And can you give us money to be able to do that? How'd that work for the school last year for everybody in town? Didn't work out that well, did it? Our representatives who are supposed to advocate for that money should be actually advocating to remove that money and leave it up to us to run our town and not tell us that if we don't do this, we won't get state money, because that's what we have with our, with our new affordable housing law. If you don't do this, we're going to take your money. So the extortion is a problem. And again, like I said earlier, okay, $1,300 per taxpayer will put a $6 million surplus into our budget. We can't all afford $1,300 for the year? I think that, I think that's not a problem. And, you know, am I going to put a warrant article forward for something like that? Not in this town. Not at all. This town is too busy looking for handouts from the state. So if you're looking for handouts from the state, then guess what? Your vote is what counts. Perro and Archibald got voted out, and you got stuck with the same people you had for more of the same. So keep that in mind when you put your vote in another two years to, who's going to take care of our town? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any public comment from, let me just, no one else on Zoom? Any public comment from the board?
Yep. I'll be really brief.
Go ahead.
I'll try to be, at least. You know, I appreciate, Glenn, your comment. I appreciate the comment from Mr. Bowen. I just want to strongly disagree. I think that one of the challenges of living in a town like Lunenburg is that many of us are homeowners, many of us have land, and we can see the pressures on our budget. But sometimes we get a little bit of tunnel vision and not thinking about what is life like in other parts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In my role, in my profession, I spend a lot of time all over the state. Let me tell you a little bit about Greenfield, where the average household income is $65,000 a year. You know, we have cities like Holyoke, where the average household median income is about $50,000-something a year. That when you're looking at our surrounding communities, and I want to speak to, you know, some of them. Senator Cronin, for example, has Fitchburg and Leominster. Fitchburg had a significant amount of migrants come into the school system this year. That added a lot of cost. Lunenburg didn't have the same scenario. And I don't want to diminish the fact that the things that we have that are facing us are real, but I want to just highlight the fact that there are needs in other communities that our legislators also serve in. Representative Scarsdale has been wonderful to work with, but she represents six or seven towns. Representative Kusmerik represents Fitchburg and one district in Lunenburg, which is dramatically different. And again, our senator represents cities, and the needs in those cities is hard. So I do not disagree that when we look at it from our own needs, that we can say, hey, why don't we getting a bigger piece of the pie? I fully sympathize as an elected official in this town with that notion. But I think we have to educate ourselves a little bit more on what's going on in other communities around the state. What are their needs that also have to be addressed? And how does that providing budgetary strain to the full picture? And just as we say in our town, like we're one town, you know, we're one state too, just like we're one nation. So, you know, we should not, the education of kids matters a lot, but it matters everywhere, just like police matter everywhere. When you drive to work every day, you're going through multiple police departments. It's in your best interest to make sure that the whole system is working. So I don't disagree that we should hold our leaders accountable. I think that when they're passing unfunded mandates, we need to call it out and hold them accountable for it. But generally speaking, I've been very impressed working with Senator Cronin, Representative Kusmerik, and Representative Scarsdale, all three of whom are Democrats, and I am not a Democrat. And I have been very supportive of their work back into the town of Lunenburg. So I just want to comment on that, but I do appreciate the other public comments as well.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. I do have one. I have to correct the record real quickly. I announced the vote for the Class II license incorrectly, even though I was trying to get the motion in the affirmative correct. I was the one that messed it up. And I said it passed, or it failed 4 to 0. I actually should have said it passed 0 to 4 and failed to pass. So I just want to make sure that that is correctly noted for the public and also that we capture it in the meeting minutes. And that is it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. It is 9:36 PM, and the Select Board is adjourned, and we will see you all next week. Have a good night.